Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Minister reports received and filed?
I have December 2017 clerk's share from recorder piece filed and December 2017's auditor's report filed and the treasurer's reconciliation report filed.
Getting busy. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Planning Commission meeting tonight, solid waste management district board meeting tomorrow, Taste of Jefferson City tomorrow night. Chiefs seven meeting Thursday night?
No.
No?
Friday night's dinner.
Friday night.
Oh, that's the Chiefs dinner, okay.
Right.
Lincoln plays at home Thursday night. Got our Renegades coffee Friday morning, got the radio Friday morning.
When?
Friday morning.
Got his budget.
We haven't signed it yet, have we?
Calling them from Florida.
Yeah, we haven't approved the budget yet, John.
Nobody mess with him. Stand up for you, Joe.
Lincoln plays Monday at home, or Saturday at home too as well. If you get a chance, go out there, it's kind of fun to watch them. Quarterly reports are due Monday too, so, John, don't forget that.
Yes, sir.
Don't want you getting in trouble. That's about it.
One thing I have an additional is I'm meeting with Eric and Public Work Staff tomorrow to talk about the small communities cooperative money and the sales tax. We're trying to figure out how to do all that yet, so.
Okay. Yep, got Taste Jefferson City. Traffic and safety's Thursday, but I've got a bank board meeting instead. I have to go to, CAP Region has an employee recognition dinner Thursday night. Renegades. Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors has their dinner on Friday night too.
Yeah, that's why I can't go to the other one.
That's what they're between Chiefs and, yeah.
Yeah, I'll miss the Chiefs this year, so.
And then the Little Theater's doing Treasure Island, so we get to go, I gotta go to that one night. I got HCJ reception on Sunday, so. Okay, that's it. Any commission comments? Okay, bids and contracts.
You can jump one.
You're gonna ask the bitch about it.
Oh, I know, I got that. We'll do that now. Whatever, you know, when somebody tells me to do this.
St. Thomas's is Friday too.
Yeah, St. Thomas, the Apostle Parish, has a fish fry on January 12th, 4:30 to 7:00 PM. Adults are $10, children are $5, so, I don't know where you... But, go out and, go out and eat.
I just don't even want to know what you were thinking. You scare me sometimes.
Okay, okay. I was gonna do that on the other issues, but that's fine, okay.
I know, I was supposed to bowl that night too, I had big plans, go eat some fish and bowl, but nope, we got all these other Christmas things.
Oh, I know, there's a... Okay, we got the... Oh, I missed the appointments by commission. Cole County Public Works Board Committee reappointments, Road and Bridge Advisory Board, James Wonderlick and Mike Wies, Track, Traffic and Safety Advisory Board, Jason Summerer and Bob Weber, Parks Committee, James Asslaxen and Tom Piper. So I've got those that we need to appoint. Too much stuff here.
Yes.
You good?
When are we gonna, did we already do Gary Vinbo? Did we do that last week?
Yeah, we did Gary last week.
Yeah, I'm fine with them.
Good?
Yeah.
You're good with those?
I move that we appoint Jim Wonderlick, Mike Wies, Jason Summerer, Bob Weber, Jim Asslaxen, and Tom Piper to the appropriate boards.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we'll move down to the approval and signing of the Jefferson City Fire Department agreement.
Do you guys want to do the budget before you do that agreement?
What, does it matter? You got a lot of people here, is that why?
Well, just so you have the money and the budget for it that you're about to sign.
We can do that. We can deviate from that, I could, Chief's got nothing else to do, Jerry's got nothing else. So, then we will go down to the public hearing for 2018 budget. We will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on it? Nope. We will close the public hearing, and then we will adopt the final budget for 2018.
Here is the court order on the funds that will actually be approved and signed. This is the letter on the budget.
Okay.
There are three memorandums of understanding. The only one that hasn't been signed yet is the prosecutor.
Yeah, I have that, so.
Here are the changes to the auditor's proposed budget that we've made since the auditor brought the budget down, and then that is the final budget that we'll put on the website. If you guys still approve the budget this morning.
Well, we're, did we get all the current carry forwards put in and stuff? And where were, where were we at? Were you about where we thought they would be, or?
Looks like we're about where they are.
Okay. Any changes?
Does that one need to be added to it?
What's that?
What the prosecutor's requesting?
At this point, I think it's a little too late. Maybe if we can do a court order later, if you guys decide that's what you want to do.
That's what I was trying to figure out, trying to avoid having to do a court order. I'd like to do these other things.
Yeah, Mark, Mark had come down, and we have the MOU for a full-time assistant prosecutor, and then a part-time, which is Paul Schloop, and he would like to add another full-time assistant prosecutor, which he would pay for out of his funds, including benefits. So I told him I would bring that up. He said he would still sign the MOU, and if we need to add, you know, to add the other one at a later date, he is good with that too, so I don't know.
Well, let's just get the budget part done. I'm just trying to, I just, seems like it would make sense to do this stuff all at the same time, but.
So is that, is this the one that we're talking about? The one that he hasn't signed yet?
Yes, and he said he would sign this, but he would like to add another full-time employee, and he would pay, you know, pay the salary and the benefits out of his fund.
So we just have two to execute them?
Two that are actually fully executing now. Usually we have them all signed at this point, because technically it's in the budget. If the MOU is not signed, I don't know.
It would probably be cleaner to have him sign the one that is there.
Okay.
Because that's the number that's in the budget you're approving, and then do a separate MOU for the additional employee, and we'll add it at a later point in time.
Okay, and he said he was, he was fine with doing that, so.
Okay, I didn't follow what you said, because this is...
We're gonna go ahead and do that one there, he can sign that one.
That's the amount that's currently in the budget, so he would sign that one and move forward with it, and then we'll do a separate MOU for the additional employee.
But he hasn't signed that one, is that what your concern is?
Yeah.
I can run that up to him and see if he will, so we can move forward.
Well, I'd like to sign these before I approve the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
So is this, is this just for what we've already agreed for, or is this adding another person?
No, this is what we've agreed for, and the addition would be basically $50,000.
Whoever. Can we do anything else here?
Uh, well, we could. You want to do the fire departments?
Well, we can't do that till the budget's...
That's true, okay. Uh, can, approval and sign of dead net.
Can't really do that.
Signing of annual, uh, signing of that. You could, we could have Bill talk about the street addressing ordinance.
Good, sure.
How's that?
Sure.
We'll just jump all around.
Julie, do you already give them a copy of that?
It's attached.
You sent it to him.
It's attached to the agenda.
Right, yeah. So this has kind of been a pretty big issue for the last several years. Our old ordinance was dated 1995. This past year, city fire and the building code officials in the city has upgraded their ordinances, and the county chiefs association members would like to update the county ordinance that would reflect the same as the city. The old ordinance calls for a three-inch numbering on homes, residential, commercial property of any type. This would actually advance that to a four-inch and larger. It's a big push, there are really no issues as far as the county and the sheriff office having to actually go out and support this. The ordinance has red in the past and still remains the same. It's up to the county fire districts to actually go out and promote this as an ordinance. So we'd like to get the commission's approval to bring this up to a new standard. That way the city and county can promote this together. Addressing is a very, very big issue, as Chief Schofield can speak as far as the city and emergency services and generally with the ambulance. That address is just not visible, it's very difficult, especially at nighttime and implement weather, to be able to find that, that home or residence, wherever the emergency is at. In the county, it's even more, because, you know, in our rural communities that may be on a mailbox, the home may be hundreds of feet off the road. Some of the areas where you have a lot of the apartment houses, string of mailboxes is set in there with the number not readable, so the ambulance and emergency services folks just do not know where to go. So, we can say those few minutes, we think it's a life-saving matter, and just like the commission to approve this new ordinance to go into effect. As Matt can speak, the city's done a lot of work on this, a lot of pamphlets, so we want to be able to, in the county, partner with the city when we get this, these news releases and public information out to the public to increase the letter size of this addressing. Any questions?
How many addresses out there are actually incorrect in the county?
Probably a lot.
What are we doing to correct that for, through mapping, or whatever?
I don't know really as far as mapping, because you don't do the addressing. It's basically just issues, is we can get the ordinance in there, so if you're putting up a new home and you say it's addressed, it has to be a four-inch style lettering.
Are you talking about not address correctly in CAD, or are you talking about on the property itself?
Well, I mean, just, I'm sure that most people aren't probably using GIS, or even maybe GIS, but other mapping software where you're trying to find an address, and it's not, that address is not where it says it is.
We address that whenever we go on a call, and the address is incorrect, we try to address that with CAD, with JCPD at that point, to try to identify it inside the system. However, when you respond in code, and you're looking for that address because someone needs help, that's where this would come in handy, because the letters would be bigger and the numbers would be bigger, so we'd be able to see it. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, I mean, obviously, if, if your software's telling you exactly where it is, I mean, that's pretty critical too.
Sure.
Because, you know, you can go from a three-inch letter to a four-inch letter, and if it's not readily visible, or easily visible, it doesn't really matter where it's at.
Right.
You know, if you can't see it, you can't really respond, so, that was, that was kind of my follow-up question there, is, is there some, some criteria as to where that needs to be so that people can find it? I mean, because I...
Well, I think it's basically listed in the orders too, that has to be within a hundred feet of the residence, kind of explained out into there. I mean, there's some other areas in the county, I'm sure there's other issues, and Matt might have some ideas, anything there too, as far as in the city, but there are just so many of them, doesn't have nothing, and that, that's just a big issue.
One of our initiatives here is if we could gain some, through both the county commission and the city council, is to partner with the post office also. They've been, they've offered that they're willing to do that, and so this is kind of the first step in gaining that momentum of kind of a cross-jurisdictional effort to really look into that, and then promote it with a media campaign. And we feel like, you know, the post office folks are out there every day, and they probably have a lot better bead on where the deficiencies are, so we're kind of trying to work that with them. We had a conversation with the new post magistrate, she was installed, I think about a year ago. She was, she was very excited to partner with us. We knew that we had code changes coming up with the city code update, and so that is kind of, was kind of the first step, this is kind of the second step, and then the third for us would be to really mount that really comprehensive media campaign to try to educate folks.
Matt's folks is the ones that started to reach out to Lowe's and Menard, and most of them are all carrying the four-inch lettering.
One thing that we've been able to do with the utility companies, especially on new construction, they won't even install electricity until they've got a permit where we come in, and they get the actual address, so I think we're all doing what we can, you know. This is just another step to require the people, you know, you can, if you're out and you see it, you know, Sheriff's Department or something like it, they can refer to the ordinance and say, you know, you really should have this marked according to the ordinance by account of committee, that you need to have it visible. There are a lot of them out there that don't, like, they all say.
One of the things I might add, if I could, is we're trying to, if we can get consistency across all agencies, we're gonna try to print up some door hang tags for everybody when they're out there, they can identify that, maybe a little bit more proactively and hang those, and if it's consistent, then we just have to have one set of door hang tags printed, and they can use those throughout Cole County.
Yeah, I like that. I hadn't, I hadn't even thought about the post office, but yeah, that's, that's kind of critical for them too, as far as finding, yeah.
I mean, I guess, I guess that's what I was kind of getting at, is that, obviously, you want them to have a four-inch number, but if it's consistently put in the same place for every address, you know, if I got a mailbox at the road and I put it there, and then somebody's got a mailbox on their house, or something, or where they put it in their, their storm door, I mean, not really helping us.
Yeah, there's no consistency.
Right, and that's, and that's what I was asking, you know, is it on the curb? I mean, some of them on the curb, correct? Those get faded? I don't know whose responsibility that is.
Cars on the curb are not, are not feasible. I think in there, can't be displayed on mailbox, because on both sides, and mailbox located directly in front of the structure. Kind of like my street, there's six mailboxes above my house. Well, if you don't have the number on your house, that mailbox don't help you.
Mm-hmm.
So that's some of the issues that we're really trying to push in here, some of this literature, have them on both.
Yeah, that's, we have ours on both, so.
I think it's, if I recall, Chris, it says in there that the curb is not allowable.
Okay.
On Harrison structure.
Well, I mean, I just think, I just think it, it needs to be clarified, and I'm not trying to tell you guys what to do, but, I mean, obviously, if you, if it's on the front door, you know where to look. I mean, if it's on the post, or on a shutter, or, you know, I mean, if you leave it wide open, people are gonna put it wherever, or they may, they may even put it where you can't even see it, because...
Well, they're saying here it should be on both sides of the mailbox, if, but only if the mailbox is located directly in front of the structure.
Right.
Or near the structure's entrance.
On the same side.
And on the same side of the street.
If you have three mailboxes on the same post, it's not gonna help.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of mailboxes in the...
So then you go put it on your door, behind the screen door, you can't see it anyway.
Yeah, basically, it's in there.
It could be six inches tall.
The number painted on the curb is not acceptable.
Mark it on the road with an arrow pointing.
So, yeah, like I said, I think this original, I remember looking it up, was October 1995, so, just trying to get up with the new standards.
I don't even know what size they are on my house, but if I only have three-inch numbers on there, am I gonna get a fine?
It's basically, that was, a town's wants to come out and give you one. If you read in there, no, it's, if you read it, the local fire department's...
I know, but they're gonna be driving around going, oh, well, that's only three-inch letters, that's a cinnamon letter, and...
Don't exceed $15.
Don't get me wrong, if I'm at somebody's house, I would like them to have a big enough number so you could find me, or a family member, or something, if there's a problem, or if my, the house is on fire, whatever, so, I'm just playing devil's advocate with this part of it, it, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal. They'll make them six-inch numbers on there, so you can really see them, paint on your driveway, at the edge of your driveway, so you can know exactly where you are. And I do the same thing, just looking for a house whenever I'm going to a job too, you're looking around, you don't, you know, you're looking up on the, up on the door, on the garage, above the mailbox, or what, so, yeah, there's not any consistency there. I'm fine with the four-inch numbers, I just don't want us doing some head hunting and going out, and everybody's got three-inch numbers. I think, you know, people need to take responsibility for their own safety on this kind of stuff, and that's exactly what that is.
I hear they're saying if the structure's not visible from the road, located farther than 100 feet from the center line, a street number shall be displayed with four-inch numbers on a marker that stands at least three feet in height, at a location that is visible from the road within 15 feet of the driveway.
You'll see a lot of that in the rural area, where it might be on a fence post where the address is visible, which is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that people realize that it's for their safety.
Their safety, right.
But, I mean, I, I think, in the rural areas, it's probably easier, because most people have got a mailbox out there, and they stick it on the mailbox.
Sure.
Usually, my problem is in the, in the cities, and in Jefferson City in particular, I can't find anything if I'm looking for an address, because there ain't an address on any commercial building out there, or if, if there is, I can't find it. You know, I'm looking for the 200 block of Missouri Boulevard, or whatever, unless I know what I'm looking for, it's hard to find the address. And same way, when I'm out in subdivisions, it's like, well, where's, where's 220? Or, or whatever the number is, so, anyway, just some, some kind of consistency would be good.
I think, I think with this new change and the publicity we're gonna get out, it's gonna probably enlighten a lot of people that never really thought of it, so maybe just push it, get that more visible to everyone, we hope.
Steve?
Well, when they contacted me about my 911 address, at the foreman's in Miller County, Public Works Center actually made a sign, it cost me $25, and had the letters and everything on it, and I had to do this as fast as I could on the gate, didn't know if that option was available in Cole County or...
The numbers will be four inches in, though. With our sign machine, that's what I had, I paid for a sign for my mailbox, it's got some four-inch, I think they're four-inch letters, I'm gonna have to measure them, but, you know, if, we can do it, it's just a matter of, you know, timing, you know, we've only got two guys in our sign making through, we don't need 20,000 people come in and say, oh, well...
We've got other places that make signs in Jefferson City, so you can get them made anywhere.
Sure.
You can get a piece of plastic and put sticky numbers from, you know, a number of places in town, retailers have numbers, so, I don't think it's necessarily a business we need to get into.
We can make them, and we have in the past, you know, people ask for a sign to be made, we've done that, hopefully to keep from some of our road signs disappearing, but we have done that. Good with this, Sam?
I guess, I'm not crazy, I didn't, just, it's another, I'm gonna probably have to change my numbers too now.
Yeah.
I don't want to be back in the wall, somebody'd be calling me out around election time that I have my numbers.
Oh, I don't think that's, I think we'd be Columbia about that.
I'm gonna have to get a measuring thing out and measure mine, so, probably got three-inch ones, so.
I mean, I do think it's a good safety thing, and you can see mine, mine are on my porch post, but like you said, you never know where to look, or you can put it on a tree, on a post behind the house, on the doghouse, above the garage, so.
That's just good.
Thank goodness for GPS, so.
Here gets down to weed.
I move that we amend the court order requiring all county residential, commercial, industrial, and public buildings to display a valid street address number as assigned by the Cole County Planning Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the official one.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will proceed.
I got more paper here than you can shake a stick at. Okay, we got all of our MOUs signed. After he does that, we'll go back to adoption of the final budget.
I move that we approve and sign the MOUs.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good with the proven budget?
Yeah.
I move that we approve and sign, do we have to sign the court order?
Yes, I got it right.
Bill wants it, though.
Just a court order, Debbie, or?
Yeah, it's a court order, it specifies each fund, and the total in each fund, debts and credits, so, it's basically approving a court order for the 2018 budget.
Ralph Ray needs to change the date on his.
I move that we sign and adopt the final budget for 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we can go to the approval and signing of the Jefferson City Fire Department First Responders Agreement.
For the department heads that are here, Chris will be sending out a note as soon as the PSNA is up to date, so you guys can start entering bills for 2018.
Can I give you something on that?
And we will send out a copy of the budget to all the departments. That actual budget will be on the town website for the days of...
You guys got any questions on this agreement with the JC Fire Department?
No.
We've done it yearly, and they truly are our first responders, so.
Suck up.
I used to be the chief's kicker. How'd they do this week? Are they still playing? Oh, still too early for that?
I move that we approve and sign the agreement with Jefferson City Fire Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Keep signing there, Sam.
That's our, that corridor.
We're almost done, Sam.
And I do want to say something.
Sign both of those copies, and then give it to Matt, Detective of the City.
Oh, I... I want to say I was impressed, the other morning, we ate breakfast at Prison Brew, and with this cold, they had a, I don't know, something, smoke was backing up in there, so the fire department came, and it wasn't anything big, but about 15 minutes later here came Matt, just to check it out. I thought that was pretty good.
He was just coming for breakfast.
Oh, was that it?
We consider prison brews critical of destruction, so we wanted to make sure that they were good.
I thought I was, I was impressed that you, you came, and, so, take the compliment and run.
You were just wanting to finish your breakfast.
Yeah, we were. That's what they, they said, we'll probably empty it, and I said, no, no, here's those Here's those two copies. Okay. All right, that, approval and signing of the DEVNET contract.
Who's got that? Signing of the DEVNET contract? Signing of the DEVNET contract? Jennifer, Larry? How if we do the signing of the annual federal equitable sharing agreement?
Okay.
So, did Sheriff leave or?
Yeah, Betsy's here though, so. Okay, Betsy, we'll move ahead. I don't know what's going on, but we're signing of the annual federal equitable sharing agreement.
Sounds good.
And certification for the Cole County Sheriff's Department for fiscal year 2017.
This is just the annual certification report that we have to do every year. It states that we did not receive any funds and we did not expend any funds. So, we're just carrying forward the $6,874.92.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
I move that we sign the equitable sharing agreement and certification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we still don't have Larry back, so we will move down to the approval. We're postponing withdrawing the geese population control at County Park for the time being. And we'll bring that back. Approval and signing of amended Cole County Environmental Protection and Safety Code ordinance.
So, this has no content changes. It's just correcting that statute reference on the cover page.
Okay. Just making it correct?
Yes. No actual changes to the ordinance, just the cover page. Where it says our authority.
I move that we approve and sign the amended Cole County Environmental Protection and Safety Code ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let me sign this real quick.
We're waiting on Larry?
We're still waiting on Larry, yeah. We got anything else you want to bring up?
Did you all want to talk about anything on the solid waste? You all got any of those? I know we had some things we were talking about, but.
About solid waste, you have my sewage.
We have solid waste. We don't need to talk about anything today, do we? If you're, okay. Just make sure we had emails going back and forth.
Yeah, we sent you an update on all this going on. We do have a very difficult sewage case going on and if we can't get resolution, we might want to go ahead and use the abatement portion of this ordinance to do something at the residence. But after we had one of Sheriff Wheeler's staff go with our staff to talk to the person, we might be able to get one.
They have a non-compliant onsite waste treatment system. And so, we've been trying to work with them and it's not really worked out very good, so. Having to take other measures to get their attention, I think, is what it comes down to. And if it comes to it, we may have to do an abatement. So, that's just kind of where we left it. I said, put on the agenda if we need to.
Do an abatement on a septic system?
Mm-hmm.
We're getting complaints from the neighbors. Well, we are not licensed regularly.
Yeah. So, it's installed by a non-
So, do they, I mean, obviously, they're telling Jeff, have they filed some type of a complaint form or anything to? I mean, how do you guys address that kind of stuff? Because it is, it is driven by complaints, right?
Right, and it has to be by an aggrieved party.
Right.
So, we don't have a formal complaint form. We do, but they don't have to fill it out. We'll take the complaints over the phone or by email. And we document those. This one just happened, I guess the neighbor knows Jeff, so he's been complaining through.
I think he stopped you off too.
Brandon did, yeah, Brandon did have several conversations with the complainant. But then, what do you?
What constitutes an aggrieved party?
We've had some discussions about that with Jill. So, basically, someone who's affected, so a neighbor.
The affluent actually is going to run on, ride on his property.
Yeah.
He's got cattle, so.
Getting closer and closer.
It really affects him as.
Right, but I mean, I get that. I mean, if it's running onto his property, I get that.
He's an aggrieved party.
But if you live three blocks down the road and you're getting a whiff of it, I mean, is that aggrieved?
Yeah, yeah.
When it rains?
Yes.
It is? Or if you live, or if you live in a holler where the air doesn't move a whole lot.
Or if you're living by, yeah.
So, if you're driving through St. Orange, you live in Wardsville and you smell it? Maybe it turned your stomach.
We have, we have a restaurant in the county that people driving by smell it and they call us and we go out and investigate it. So, I mean, you're an aggrieved party. Yep, we're still working with them, it's still not working. So, anyway, this is a unique situation. You know, the person built a brand-new home and had someone who was not onsite, a registered onsite sewage installer, install the system. But they don't have any receipt, of course. They don't have invoice, we don't even know what's in the ground, but it's obviously not functioning properly. So, there's several issues going on with this situation. And they didn't fill out their building permit, right? Because they circled existing system on the building permit, which was obviously not true. So, anyway, a lot of issues going on with this one.
Thank you all very much for working with it.
Okay, well, rather than singing and dancing, I do have, the clerk's office is going to need our chambers. We got a lot of elections coming up. They would like to use the commission chambers on the following dates. March 31st from 8:00 to 1:00. April 3rd from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, April 9th from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. August 4th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00. August 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. August 13th, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. November's the, November 3rd, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. November 6th, 11:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. We could do a limited agenda that day. November 13th, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So, we can.
We can move.
We can move our date.
Well, we can, we can move the day or we can go across the street.
It's kind of hard for us to move accounts payable since we've got it going on a cycle. We can, I think the only one that conflicts is the 13th of November. Otherwise, we're kind of letting them have it after we get done with the commission meeting. We can have a limited-
Like a year from now?
Yeah. That's your, your max week. And so, we got to have bills paid that week because we got holidays in that month.
We can go over to the sheriffs.
Yeah. They've got like some like at 11:00 a.m. If we would start at 7:30 or seven, you know, we can change times or.
Sure.
We could do some of these, they're done by 1:00. We could have an afternoon meeting too.
November 13th is probably deer season, so, we, you know, when do you think long and hard about that? Because we may have a commissioner that's not here.
I hadn't thought of that.
Yeah. Well, that's a long ways away.
Yeah. But anyway, they just requested that, so we did that.
We'll deny it.
We're neighbors.
I've got an email from the U.S. Census Bureau and it's, this is a courtesy copy to the highest elected official, our tribal chair.
Chief Sam.
Yes, I might, I might have some Indian blood in me, I don't know. Please verify that the Boundary and Annexation Survey, BAS, contract has responded to the survey. If they have, no further actions required.
Let's talk to Melissa about it.
Yeah, yeah. Can I be the tribal chair?
Just for the day, though.
Okay.
Are you, what were them dates that they were wanting to use it?
Here. And we can have them just.
Well, like Chris said, we got a building right across the way there. We got ambulance building, there's a room in there we can use. We've got plenty of places we can do it.
Possibly a courtroom.
We can come out to the new health department, yeah.
Maybe.
And she'll have the kitchen there, so we can have breakfast.
No, we don't need anything slowing us down. We got no things.
You can come out the hall.
Public Works, there you go.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just said we'd do that.
All right. Is that it?
That's all I got, but does Larry, do we have the DEVNET?
You have the contract.
Oh, oh, okay. God, I was going to have to sing next.
We got in there. Either got too much sleep or not enough.
Jill's reviewed this and they made the changes, so.
Okay.
I move that we approve and sign the contract with DEVNET.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's been a long time. Yeah, Hal, yeah, you got, I'm big chief. Did he run for, he ran for office in Osage County?
Did we get the maintenance agreement, tax maintenance agreement on the agenda?
That's what I was going to bring up next, but since you're there. You guys did receive email and so did the county clerk on December 29th from Chris Estes, the maintenance plan for 2018, 19 year. Just getting this last week, we haven't really reviewed it, so I'll fill it on the agenda for next week. By state statute, he has to submit it to you guys by the end of the year. He's wanting you to sign this and send it to the State Tax Commission. But having not reviewed it and Chris did not review it yet, we want to punt it till next week.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, is it?
It is not on the agenda. I purposely did put it on it.
That's fine.
Because I didn't think we had enough time to get it ready.
That's fine. Put it on the agenda for next week?
Yeah.
Let us know if there's anything in there that we-
Right, and the way the State Tax Commission has always told me too, they can submit a plan, but they really go by the approved budget by the tax commission, so.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you for signing the DEVNET contract.
Sure. When are they going to start? Are they already?
They have not yet, they were waiting for this. Assuming as soon as we send them back an executed copy, then they said they would set and start setting up a-
Schedule.
Execute it to the pit of misery. Dilly-dilly.
Dilly-dilly.
Took a break of Sam's.
You actually poured my coffee for me, so.
Sorry about that.
I move we stand in recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Boy, this is quick.
Yeah, I didn't see that coming today.
Got to giggle today or something.
He is kind of giddy.